March seventeenth, twenty fifteen. Senator Clark?
Will the board members or president please respond? Mr. Sternman?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Boone?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrence Muhammad?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Kipman?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
You have a call on Mr. Chair. The next item is a discussion of the needed facilities.
Mr. Gray?
Well, thank you, Mr. Coleman and other members of the board. Um, tonight's a continuation of our meeting on February twenty-third, where I kind of gave you all an overview of some challenges that we face currently south of the James River with our middle and elementary schools. Tonight's presentation, you're going to see a fairly large amount of data that will be an integral part of the facility's task force report that we'll give, um, when that's coming out and that process at the end of this meeting. So, to give you all an idea, and while I know you can't make a decision tonight, but as, as an administration and from a facility standpoint, we face a really critical deadline that's fast approaching. And each day that goes by is one less day for us to get things accomplished. And you'll see some of those challenges that are, the clock is ticking down on us. From today, there's a hundred and seventy-four days till we start school on September eighth. Okay? When I back out to weekends and the holidays, which would be overtime to get things done, we're down to a hundred and twenty-two days. So, in a hundred and twenty-two count, in workdays, school starts on September eighth. And from a facility standpoint, that's like tomorrow. Okay? And the clock's ticking on us very quickly. The Elkhart Middle School is what generated really this discussion, a significant part of the discussion because of the work that we did from the environmental standpoint in moving Elkhart into Clark Springs. Now, as we go through this, the things that, we've broken it down into different steps. From the immediate standpoint, where are the students from Elkhart going to attend in the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year? You'll see some options tonight. You'll see a recommendation, but that's one hundred and seventy-four days away. Elkhart starts the new school year September eighth of two thousand and fifteen. On a short-term basis, because you'll see the challenges we face, we can do things on the immediate basis today. I'm not saying any of the options are ideal, but there are options to address the Elkhart Middle School situation short, on, on an immediate basis. But on a short-term basis, we get into the question, should the existing Elkhart Middle School be repaired? Should the existing Elkhart Middle School be renovated? And the last question is, if, if the answer to both of those are no, is there a better alternative for the students of Elkhart Middle School and the district? So, we'll stay focused on Elkhart from an immediate. The cost of repairing the damage that's in place, so that's replacing the mechanical system. And as we discussed before, when we replace that mechanical system, we have to put in a new mechanical system into that school. When we do that, because of the age of our facility and the age of our equipment, in all likelihood, the electricity that comes into the building is not going to be sufficient for the load of the equipment we have. So, when we do that, we have to change the electrical coming into the building. By law, we then have to make all life safety operations compliant with the current code. So, this building, which is seventy-five years old, that building consists of six buildings on its campus. The main building consists of four buildings that were put together. Then we have two outbuildings on that particular campus. And in all likelihood, as I've seen in other buildings on our campuses, we didn't upgrade electrical, we didn't upgrade a lot of the support as we did different parts of the work. So, there's a strong possibility that the electrical will need to be upgraded. That costs nine and a half million dollars. If we renovated Elkhart so where it's fairly equal to an MLK, okay, as close as we can get it, the cost of renovating that, including athletic facilities, as well as technology, furniture, it's everything, is twenty-three million dollars. Okay? Now, here's our challenge. Neither of those two options are viable. Okay? The first reason is it will take twenty-four months for us to complete that work. If I had the money today, under either option, it's twenty-four months. And that's, that's everything clicking. The second is when we look at the enrollment for Elkhart and what it's going to do in five years and what it's going to do in ten years, it's projected to grow over the next five years by one hundred and three students. So, a school that has four hundred and ninety-plus students, a capacity of a little over five hundred and sixty, five hundred and forty-six students, the enrollment's going to far exceed that capacity very quickly. And then it grows an additional sixty-three students over the following five years. So, by the end of ten years, we're a hundred and sixty-six students higher than we were today. In either instance, with all that we talked about, it doesn't work for what we have today. This shows you where we're at. Four hundred and ninety students today. The green shows you the capacity of the building. And you can see, here's today, in year four, we go up. Year five, we take off, and we continue going forward for the next ten years. Now, in looking at our enrollment, these enrollments were done by Dr. Jerome McKibben, who's a doctor of demography. He's the individual that did our enrollment projections in two thousand and seven. This was done as part of our work with the Cropper GIS team. Um, and Cropper is here tonight, representative from their company, so that if you would like to see maps during the course of the conversation and questions, we can hook that up, okay, very easily. When we looked at, just to give you some information about the enrollment and how we went about doing the enrollment process, the first thing is, we take the census data and break that down into tracts, okay? Once we do that, we break it down into what we call a cohort component method. The cohort component forecast refers to the future population that is expected because of a study and purposeful selection of the components of change. Those changes will be births, deaths, and migration, that's people living in Richmond today that move out and people that are not in Richmond today that move in. And then we forecast models are developed to measure the impact of these changes in each specific geographic area. So, not only did we do it in a city, but we broke it down by each individual school. Okay? And our forecast is done by grade, by school. Calculating the enrollment forecast, we use a modified average survivorship method. What we fact is that we consider in the development of that approach are the number of women in childbearing age, the change in the area mortality rates, which will impact the number of homes that turn over, the magnitude and prevalence of outmigration patterns by age, the magnitude and prevalence of the inmigration patterns, and then considerations determined by local neighborhood factors. Now, as you'll see in the elementary school, when we did this back in two thousand and seven, it was not projected for Richmond Public Schools to see a significant increase in their student count. That is change. And that, with that change, it's really taking things that should have been done maybe twenty years ago with facilities, and it's bringing it to the forefront today. So, this, what we're going to talk about, isn't a problem that was created by this administration, by this board, or even the prior. This create, was created twenty years ago. But now, where we're at today, and you'll see a statement that we've got in this presentation, we're at the point of no return. Okay? And when you look at the projected enrollment in the elementary schools that we'll get to in a second, it really jumps out off the page that we have a train coming down the tracks. And in a hundred and seventy-four days, folks, it's going to be here. Our recommendation, as we look, and we broke this down by data, there's nothing magical about this, okay? Um, this is to give you all information, okay, on what we need to do. There's no pride in authorship. If you've got other suggestions, I'm wide open to them. We have beat this around with a lot of help with everybody that's assisted me on this project, as well as the administration. And I really want to thank everybody. This isn't Tommy's report. This is a team effort. And I think the team's done a pretty good job, and I'd like to thank everyone involved. So, for the next school year, one option is we could stay at Clark Springs. You can see the word "not recommended." That's not the option that I believe is the right thing, nor does the administration believe that that's the right course of action is for us to stay at Clark Springs. Okay? But, I want you to know, it's one we can do. But when you look at a slide that will come up with the growth at Elkhart, if you go back, and you look at Elkhart right here, we're tight right now, aren't we? In the second year, it's seven more students. And you say it's only seven. If we're already tight, we reached the breaking point at some point, and one more student will tip it over. And we're at that point. And we obviously couldn't handle it when we got to five hundred and thirty-one students. Okay? So, that drove the decision about not recommending Clark Springs. The next option, and remember, it's twenty-four months, twenty-four months to do the repair or to do the renovation. So, even if that's the recommendation and that's the course of action we're going to take, it's still, and that would, that means those students, if the dollars were available today, the building would not be available until two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. So, for fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen, we have to have a facility for the Elkhart Middle School students. Okay? And our recommendation is to merge Elkhart into Thompson. And we have another caveat, as we call the strategic component, that's an integral part of this plan. Okay? And so, don't focus just on Thompson and Elkhart becoming one yet. I mean, it is the goal, but the location where it's at and how it gets there, let, follow along with this presentation, okay? From a long-term perspective, here's what we can do. One, we can build a new Elkhart Middle School and address its current student population. That's what the building has to that. It can handle five hundred and forty-six students. The population's four hundred and ninety students. All right? You saw the projected growth of Elkhart. So, in five years, we would exceed that growth. That, that building, from a capacity standpoint, couldn't meet the rest of the needs of Elkhart. The cost of building an Elkhart as a new school, the same size, is about thirty-five to forty million dollars. If we were to do that, Thompson Middle School, which still has four hundred-plus students, about four hundred and ninety as well, is an older school. It's fifty years old. And we need renovations to bring it up to that equal state for middle schools. And that cost is approximately twenty-seven million dollars. The total cost under this approach is in the sixty-two to sixty-seven million dollar range. That is not an option that we recommend. Okay? But, it's an option for you to consider. A second option, we can remain at Thompson. Okay? The renovation costs at Thompson are twenty-seven million dollars. And that'll be your next thought. Let's just stay at Thompson. The challenge is with Thompson is that, number one, it's fifty years old. Okay? It's got a limited footprint. So, what we do at that facility does limit what we can do long-term at that particular school. All right? Give you an example to tell you about how the renovation would be a huge factor at school. The facility, the mechanical system of that school today does not provide any heat or air to the hallways. When that was designed and installed, all it does is provide heat and cooling air to the classroom. That's it. So, the minute I open the door and get in the hallway, the common area space, there's no conditioned air. So, and this is again, the age of the systems that we're dealing with and the challenges we deal with, okay? So, you can see where the high cost comes from the renovation, just to that. And again, remember, it's a limited, limited footprint that we have at Thompson. The structure of the building doesn't allow us to go up on top of that roof. That building's structure would not, the, the cost to provide the support to go up above would be off the charts. When you look at Elkhart and Thompson combined, and this shows you, nine hundred and eighty-three students on today's numbers, nine hundred and seventy-three projected for next year. We stay flat for the three, and because of Elkhart's growth, look at what it's doing. And we get up to eleven hundred and seventy students in ten years. Now, remember, projections, while we have a lot of scientific evidence for it, and it's the best, at the end of the day, it's still a crystal ball. Okay? And those numbers could be off, either to the good or to the bad. But you have to plan on what's the best-case scenario right now. And that clearly shows that staying at Thompson beyond about three years will become a challenge in that school. Okay? Day one, we're going to hit it at full capacity. Now, where are our students, which we've seen before? This right now, as we can see, this is the Elkhart zone. The green is Bouchal, and the kind of the purplish is Thompson. Thompson sits right here, yet the bulk of the students that attend Thompson are sitting right down here. And as we begin to the discussion about rightsizing, or whatever you want to call it, it's a match of students with their assets that we have at the district. So, by having Thompson here and the students here, we have a huge transportation expense, which impacts that general purpose budget that Ralph's been working so diligently, him and Betsy have done a great job in their presentation. But as he's been discussing with you all, those numbers, this transportation, from here to here, we pay a dollar ninety-two cents per mile, and that doesn't count the cost of the drive.
Is that per mile, ninety-two cents?
No, that's per bus, per mile.
Per mile, per bus. For every bus.
For every bus. For every bus that drives from down here.
To over there.
Up to here, it's a dollar ninety-two cents per mile, and that does not include the cost of the drive. Okay? That distance, when we start looking at why's transportation late? Think about all the issues that can happen every day as we're traveling on the roads. Those impact buses. And now, all of a sudden, there's further delays that take place. And these buses today are on our first tier. So, if we're late here, it impacts the second and the third tier automatically. And there's not any way for me to play catch-up. So, what's our long-term outlook for recommendations? Our recommendation is to build a fifteen-hundred-student, and this is the max. This is the RPA maximum. Now, from a utilization standpoint, we would say at ninety percent. So, the schools, on a functional basis, would be thirteen-hundred-and-fifty students. And ideally, on a functional basis, you'd stay at ninety percent. So, this would be about a twelve-hundred-student school. And that matches, you remember, the graph we had that shows the projected growth. That building would cost, and this is an all-in number from conversations with the city on their, uh, project management team, so it's not numbers I pulled out of the air or my best guess, um, it's sixty million dollars. Now, remember, the cost of building a new Elkhart at the same size plus renovating Thompson, so two schools, was sixty-two million dollars. With that, we would propose a rezoning, or you to consider rezoning the students. And you'll see a map in a second where some ideas are. That would close two schools that, from just a renovation standpoint, was fifty million dollars. Twenty-three and twenty-seven. We talked about what the cost of a new Elkhart the same size plus the renovation, which doesn't work because it doesn't have enough room. Okay? And the most important thing that Ralph and his team has said, and this is what everybody wants to talk about, what happens when you do consolidation? What's the benefits that come from it? The benefit is that the annual operating cost of that school would save this district one million dollars per year. Just the utility, so as you're thinking about it, just the utility bill at Elkhart last year, in two thousand and fourteen, was one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's what we spent. Okay? And then the rest is going to be in the personnel and other things. So, there are savings that then gives the administration and you dollars to do other things, for other opportunities that are out there. And there's lots of opportunity. We would propose, if you went with this approach, that there would be a rezoning. I know that's a bad word, and I hate to say it because I'll have a bull's eye on my chest now. But, it makes the most economical sense from a, from an operation standpoint and where the assets would be located at. If you, if, if this was the approach, and this is the approach we're recommending, we can build, this new clicker, and I'm not jiving here. Is build it either at the existing Elkhart site, which is fine, or find land in this area, because you can see where the students are located at. Okay? Bouchal, as you're going to see in a second, I wouldn't touch because Bouchal has some projected growth. We would recommend taking a portion of the Thompson zone and rezoning that into Brown, which would be more, makes better sense from a logistic in where they're located at. And then take the remainder of the pie and split that up as best we can from an operational standpoint to minimize our operating dollars, freeing up dollars to be used in the classroom. When we looked at Bouchal, today, Bouchal has six hundred and six students and a capacity that's at eight hundred and sixty-three. But, look what happens over the next five years. Bouchal's projected enrollment's going, and it will get above its capacity. Okay? And while Bouchal could have some addition to it, it would be an expensive addition to that particular building. Any questions?
Where is Lucille Brown at capacity right now?
Lucille Brown has seven hundred and forty-nine students. At October third, its capacity's about eight hundred and twenty students.
And five years, it's going to be?
Lucille Brown's projected to be flat.
Flat, okay.
Of the seven hundred-plus students at Lucille Brown, right now, today, four hundred and twenty-five of the students live inside the zone of Brown. The other students are coming from outside of the zone.
Okay, Dr. Jones, follow up on this, uh?
So, Mrs. Terrence, why are you saying don't touch Bouchal, even with the projected growth?
Well, that, that growth right now, um, at this number, it doesn't exceed, I look at a hundred and ten percent of this capacity number before I'd get, where I would be saying that building's going to have a challenge meeting it. And so, it's not reaching that threshold, nor is it holding it. So, that's why I'm saying at this point, not to touch Bouchal.
They started out with more than six oh six this year.
Right, but on October third, their, their actual count was six hundred and six students.
All right.
You look at it lots and lots of times, just like in your head.
Ms. Evans?
Two questions. You talked about maybe looking for land.
Uh-huh.
Does it seem feasible that there is any other land in there?
We've done some GIS looks, um, and haven't found any real parcels that are out there. An ideal middle school site is, is approximately twenty-five to thirty acres. An elementary site should be fifteen acres of land. We actually have elementary schools on three acres. Okay? And the majority of our elementary schools sit on acreage less than ten. So, without that acreage, you have problems with parking. You have a problem with parent drop-offs. You have a problem with bus loops. You have a problem with athletic opportunities. You have problems with growth. You've got to have a sufficient footprint to meet the new needs of the school district. A typical middle school, you'd like it to be in that twenty-five to thirty-acre range. Elkhart sits on fifteen acres though. And Elkhart, because of its topography, there's a slope as you go from the main buildings down toward the ball field that drops, if I'm not mistaken, about twelve feet. So, it would present a significant construction challenges trying to incorporate that land with, uh, the existing academic piece. So, you can see, in the case of Elkhart, while we have fifteen acres there today, I don't have fifteen acres to build on. We have about ten acres, nine to ten acres of land that we can actually build on.
Follow up?
With the capacity where, uh, Bouchal is right now, where Thompson is right now, is one of the options that maybe we haven't seen yet, but, uh, do, does it seem feasible that we could open, reopen, open enrollment and provide those families an option to go to any of those schools where capacity may be available?
as, as a district, as a district right now today, and this is as a total district, north and south, our middle school's based on functional capacity. And remember, functional capacity is twenty-two to one. Okay? The RPS maximum is twenty-four to one, when we look at the capacity. On a functional basis, our middle schools today, which is eight middle schools, we have one thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven empty seats. One thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven empty seats.
On the middle school.
On the middle school. Okay? That's a lot of, that, think about it, that's a lot of seats. Here's what's really telling about it. That represents twenty-eight point seven-four percent of all middle school seats in the district. So, almost one-third, on a functional basis, which is left, functional capacity's left. Almost one-third of our space is empty. But we still have to heat it, cool it, clean it, do everything associated with it. Now, when you look at the RPS max, on an RPS max basis, we have two thousand four hundred and three empty middle school seats. That's thirty-five point eight-one percent. I hope that answered the question, all right?
Ms. Larson?
Okay. So, closing two middle schools would be Elkhart and Thompson. So, what would happen with the Thompson space?
Surfless it and give it to the city as quickly as we possibly can. Or sell it. But being as close as it is to Ugonat.
Right.
From a development standpoint, I don't know that you're, it's going to have a lot of development opportunities because of its proximity to that school.
Like what?
You know, we really share the access road to the back of the school, to the back. So, you know, thinking out, this is out, this is me thinking out, out loud.
So, you know, thinking out, this is me thinking out loud, and this is probably dangerous. I don't think that the school system would be in a position, because of the way we come into Yuguna, the way we come into the back by the loading dock and the whole mechanical system in the back, plus accessing that softball and baseball when we open that next fall, I don't believe we would be in any position to be able to give that property up. I think we would look at tearing it down if we had the dollars because that would be a better, maybe you open it up as green space, a park, you know, something that ties to the school. But I don't think we would be in a position, because of what I just said with the two accesses, that we could do anything with that school, from a different sales standpoint.
Okay. Okay, that was my big question for now. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. So.
When you talk about giving twenty-five acres, give or take, for the middle school, is that assuming the sort of suburban model that we have in the metro, which is more horizontal rather than vertical?
Correct. Yes, sir.
So you could, could you conceivably get away with a little more vertical construction?
Correct. Yeah, because then it gives you the space to do your gymnast, it gives you the space to do your ball fields. You could do it going vertical.
And then, I guess a follow-up question on Thompson. Thinking out loud, I guess, is probably a huge for me too.
I'm already out there.
Looking, do the enrollment numbers support doing any back-of-the-envelope calculations or analysis of whether a further expansion of Yuguna and adding some, all students of George Wood to the middle school?
Say that again before I go too far out on a limb.
So basically, you would take the Thompson space and Yuguna so you could accommodate George Wood's students. So you'd probably be going to?
We'd be at about twenty-three hundred students. Sir?
That was being funny, well, I'll change it.
I think, I think, I think as you look at the facility report, that will be, you know, we'll talk about it here later. The district as a whole, if you looked at all of the high schools, and you really thought about what number of students need to be in a typical high school, Dr. Veden and I both have seen it come from districts that have two thousand student schools. The larger school is easier to construct because, you know, when you do the construction of two schools, they both have an office. Whereas if it's one school, it's only one office. Maybe a little bit bigger, but it's still only one office. They both have the same entryway. One school, one entryway. Two schools, two cafeterias. One school, one cafeteria. Two schools, two gyms. And you can see that on a per-square-foot basis, it's significantly cheaper to build bigger than it is to do smaller. And that's the same thing that I've heard Ralph talk about, and Dr. Veden, from the consolidation. It's the same theory that happens there. Okay? And that, to me, is, if you did that, you would look at the numbers and say, instead of having five comprehensive high schools, this district could go with three. And actually, it could probably go to two. But that's a dramatic change from what's here to that.
But won't we need forty clear acres?
There, you would be surprised at the acreage we have. They are, we have land size that we can build high school. High school, we have land. You're going to see it tonight at the end, and you're also going to see it in the facility report. But tonight, we're focused on, because of the immediate need come September.
I don't know if you know, what are our sort of, you know, the districts, the school divisions that I think it's more appropriate to compare us to, rather than where I go, Chesterfield, but Norfolk, towards the Hampton. They have two thousand, J. Beach, two thousand.
I'll have to check, that's unsaid. Well, Ralph, I think, I think Mr. Westbay may know. Ralph, can you help me out more?
At Hampton, for news, Norfolk.
They have those sites. Yeah, their high school of two thousand is northern, northern.
And any analysis on what that does to per people cost, given that?
Three thousand dollars.
So we go from fourteen thousand to eleven or thirteen to ten?
Correct.
We'll always be a little bit higher because of our poverty issue. But you will close the gap on it because they're not as impoverished as Richmond is. So we're always going to have any special ed piece like you said. Those two factors are going to tweak us a little bit higher.
Right.
But you will close the gap significantly when we deal with the suburbs.
Two thousand, two thousand, conservative. Two thousand would probably be a more conservative number.
Okay. Lars?
I remembered what else I was going to say. So, let's say we, hypothetically, we move forward with combining the Elkhart students into Thompson for next year. And we get funding to start this big middle school. We decide this is the right route to go. How long does it take? Let's say we get the funding starting July first. How long does it take to fill out?
Six months to do the site design work, and eighteen months to do the complete construction. So twenty-four months, though.
Can I add a different question for that time?
Yes, sir.
The question you also probably throw on the table is what in your blueprint already that you've done at the middle school, could you just duplicate or expand? Whether that has any, and I wasn't here for MLK, so that may be.
Oh, right. With the design, yes.
But sometimes you can just expedite with design if that is scalable.
And to take Dr. Veden, well, to take what Dr. Veden said, he's exactly right. Let's say that Elkhart is built at the new Elkhart Thompson, the new middle school, whatever it's called. So please, I apologize if I say anything wrong. I do not mean to say anything about schools and whatnot. No, no, sir. If we were to rebuild Elkhart at the Elkhart site, we could probably have that site designed, instead of six months, cut it to three months, using the MLK design.
The city owns the plan, right?
We have the plan.
Are we, the city probably?
Correct. That's right. That's correct.
So, cutting that means that you're just really fitting that plan to the site?
That's correct. That's correct.
So if we tinker with the Elkhart-Thompson lines and you build the new school down in the, in between the, where you said on that map, Elkhart-Bouchal, I guess it would be kind of bordering my district a little bit, I guess.
Right in the middle of the district.
I'm just thinking up top, where Thompson's lines currently are, would that, would that impact, you know, would that, how would that impact like Brown?
That would go, we would recommend bringing this into Brown.
Bringing what into Brown?
Bringing this portion, these yellow dots. These yellow dots represent students that go to Thompson today. And obviously, obviously, when we do this, we would, you know, we can do the count of the actual students. So this is just doing a pictorialing, okay? But we would take some cut here to bring them into Brown. And that would increase Brown's.
And the bottom, and the, and the bottom of the blue and the brown dish, the brown zone, would they be filtered into the new, some of them filtered into the new school?
Not, not under the recommendation we have because there's so much growth taking place here and here that we're recommending that Brown remains in the Brown division. And this and this would, you know, here's Elkhart today, right here. And if we couldn't find land, then this does work. It's on the western edge, southwestern edge of that zone, but it would work.
And absolutely no impact.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay? So now, that was the easy discussion.
I have a good question about that.
Ms. Gray. Ma'am.
I mean, my question is just out of the CIP plan I thought put forward last week from the mayor. It's forty-one million, but eighteen point three roughly.
Forty-one, thirty.
Is it thirty-one million? Thirty-one million.
Ralph, is it thirty-one?
Thirty-one.
The mayor's CIP.
Yes.
Thirty-one, so eighteen million of that. Eighteen point three is. And then, the remaining amount, so thirteen million, that's for this coming year. But I'm looking at the five-year plan. It's another ten million over the next four years. So two and a half million.
Ralph, help me on that one.
That's a total of forty-one million over the next five years. So what is, and that's considering everything we have to do within the district. What would the, and looking at the borrowing capacity of the city and all that, what would the reality be that we? I mean, I don't see us really having many options on not getting a new middle school, but I.
What's the chances of it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, I'd have to ask Ralph if he wants to get, that's a financial decision, and I'm not in a position to answer that. I mean, Ralph, you want to take a shot, or? I mean, we, you know, we don't know the city's number, we don't know the city's stuff. I mean, that's the city's.
We just have to articulate the needs.
I mean, I think we're giving what the city.
Right, they, they, they asked for a plan, it seems like they would be seeking.
I mean, what we presented tonight on the middle school does two things. One, they asked for a plan, that's a plan. Number two, since I've been here, I've heard the right sizing, right sizing, right sizing. This plan that we presented tonight does that.
Starts.
Starts, step one. But for this plan, it begins that process and shows we can be done. Okay? All right. So as we look at the elementary schools, keep these numbers in mind. On a functional basis, our elementary schools, and this is all elementary school, have one thousand two hundred and thirty-one empty seats. Now, remember, the middle school, one thousand two hundred and thirty-one. Now, remember, the middle school, which was one thousand seven hundred plus, that represented almost twenty-nine percent. On the elementary schools, the empty seats only represents eight point six-six percent. So we have a different problem that we're going to face on the elementary schools. Okay? Mr. Goldman? Mr. Born?
So, Tommy, and Mrs. Hearn, just clarify this for me, but I think it's important for us to hear because we hear a lot about, oh, we've got ninety-three hundred empty seats in which we're located. And I was shocked to hear just the raw number of twelve hundred empty seats in elementary schools. But as my fine colleague, Russ Richmond, reminded me, that's about ninety percent capacity.
Almost ninety-two percent.
Ninety-two percent, that's, that's sort of where, so it's not that, so we have to look at empty seats in context.
Correct. Correct. Exactly. Exactly. And that's why I said this is different. In the middle school, there's excess capacity. In the elementary, in total, we have a challenge. Okay? But it's a, it's a, it's a much bigger challenge, okay, as we go through this, with the right sizing and the operating costs. Okay? Now, two other statistics for y'all to keep in mind as you're looking at this. Remember, functional capacity, and let's take Broad Rock, it's six hundred and fifty students. But yet, Broad Rock on October third had eight hundred and twenty-seven students in that building. And you never heard one complaint about educating those students. Okay? On the maximum side, the RPS max, now, this number on middle school went to twenty-four hundred students, almost thirty-six percent of capacity. On the elementary, it goes to three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight students, or nineteen point nine-six percent. Okay, now, just keep that in mind, and you'll see where it's going with context here. Now, when you're looking at our elementary schools, of the twenty-five elementary schools we have, eight have a capacity, a functional capacity in excess of six hundred. Six have a capacity between five hundred and six hundred. Nine have a capacity between four hundred and five hundred. And two only have a capacity between three hundred and four hundred. Many folks, and this computation differs district to district and group to group, but in my former life, we use six hundred and fifty students at an elementary level to break even. At six hundred and fifty students, we right now have three schools that achieve that number. So out of twenty-five schools, that means twenty-two are losing money. So when you're allocating that dollar and trying to achieve things, that's where the dollars are going. And that's what finance has been saying continuously. The size of the school has a direct impact. Just as Ralph said, when you looked at the high school, Norfolk's running two to three thousand dollars less per student than we do, and there are two thousand seat schools. And we only have one high school that's at a little bit less than fourteen hundred. The rest are even below that number. And it has a direct impact on your operating expense. So keep that in mind as we talk about the elementary schools. Remember, as you look at building utilization, most people will say eighty-five to ninety percent of that functional capacity. And the functional capacity is utilized for a lot of reasons. One, students don't come and even numbers. Okay? Two, the educational program needs that we identify today may be different tomorrow or different in three years. And when you're building a building, you're building it to last fifty years. So you want to design that space so that it gives the educators the greatest flexibility to meet whatever their goals and needs are at that time. You can't design it just for today. It's going to change between today and in the next fifty years. The culture and climate will impact the amount of students. And as you get above capacity, you start having challenges in buildings. The morale inside of a building. Think about Broad Rock. It's a building designed for six hundred and fifty students, but we have eight hundred and twenty-seven in that space. It challenges that school, the staff, the students each and every day. There's no space for unexpected growth. And you're going to see that tonight. Okay, and you're going to see some numbers tonight that are going to, I think are going to be wow numbers. Okay? And as we push, like in the case of a Broad Rock, the mechanical systems are not designed to hold the kind of loads we're putting inside that space. So the life expectancy of the equipment is going to decline. And that has nothing to do with maintaining it and spending the preventive dollars on it. It's not designed, that building is not designed to have that many kids coming in and out of it every. of it every day. It's designed for a specific load that's there. When you look, there's twelve elementary schools that are south of the river. Of those, eight have a build currently are sitting above the ninety percent threshold. And look at those percentages, Broad Rock at a hundred and twenty-seven percent, Green is at a hundred and thirty-five percent. Oak Grove's at a hundred and six plus percent, and Westover Hills is at a hundred and six plus percent. Remember, the ideal goal was eighty-five to ninety percent. So eight, eight of our twelve elementary schools today exceed a good comfortable number. The following four are below that ninety percent. So when you look at this, you say, well, let's just take all twelve schools and kind of make them equal. That's your first thought. But as you're going to see, it doesn't always work out quite that way. The reason is that last line, as you're going to see. Where those schools are located at is not where the growth's taking place.
Are you talking about these particular schools?
Correct. So when we look at, how, how are we going to address these schools? Okay? And we look long and hard, could we do things, could we reshuffle the deck? Could, you know, we looked at a lot of combinations, and it just, it just doesn't work. Okay? Yes, ma'am. Right there.
Uh, when I was looking through some of the data that I received earlier, it was more Nelson and Clark than Patrick Henry.
We're just looking south, we're just looking south, and Patrick Henry we don't touch, because Patrick Henry, we're not responsible for the size of their building, where they're projecting enrollment growth is, from a facility standpoint, so I'm only looking at what the district has responsibility. Yes, ma'am. So, you look, there's the capacity, six thousand four hundred and fifty students, and you can see we've got a nice growth that's projected to take place on our elementary schools south of the river. Now, those students are going to translate to growth at what? Our middle school?
Hopefully.
Hopefully, the majority. So this has a direct correlation, and those middle school numbers will impact as we look at our high schools and what we need high school-wise in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. And remember, a building has an expected life of fifty years. That's a long time in crystal ball, but. Now, where's our growth today? And this is based off of capacity. Here's Broad Rock and Oak Grove. Here's Green, Francis, Westover, Reed, all are approaching, are all in excess of ninety-five percent. The schools that are not, we go from Blackwell to Swansboro to Red, Southampton and Fisher. Okay? And we have like a corridor right there. But the growth is right here. Now, in ten, in five years, look at dark the shade has of the zone, which means those schools that had been lighter color in five years are projected to even get bigger than they are today, and put more pressure on the existing capabilities of those facilities. We're projecting, we're projecting in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, the elementary schools south of the James River will increase by two hundred students. And the bulk of that is five schools, as you're going to see. In ten years, we see a little bit of widening taking place here in Oak Grove, but still, we're above ninety-five percent. We see a little bit of widening taking place here in Miles Jones, but still above ninety-five percent. Westover, Green, Francis, Broad Rock, all are exceeding a hundred percent, even ten years out. So, here's what those show. We have a growth issue in the south zone of our elementary school. It is not going away. Now, how did we get to this point? When those projections were done in two thousand seven, it was thought that our elementary counts were going to basically stay flat. And, and actually, what we've seen is a change in the migration pattern that's resulting in more school-aged children staying and being in Richmond. And that's causing an increase in our elementary schools. That's good. But from a facility standpoint, it's challenged, and it's a significant challenge that we face. If you look at the schools that are greater than ninety percent in their functional capacity, look at the gap between their capacity and where we're projecting their enrollment. Those eight schools that we showed at the beginning is where the growth's going to continue, is projected to continue to occur. It's not spread out throughout the, the, the district, through that zone. It's projected to still be in those eight schools, and you saw that with the map. Those schools continue to see the growth. When you look at the schools that are less than ninety percent, look, here's their enrollment going down, and look at the capacity. There's space, there's seats. The challenge is they're not where the growth's occurring. Okay? And it's not, let's just take the deck, reshuffle it and then divide it out. It would be a difficult, difficult challenge to do.
Tommy.
Sir.
Another thing is that we've got, we're leaving about two and a half million dollars in state K three class size money on the table too, because we don't have the space for those teachers.
Thanks. I meant to ask you that. But, but, did y'all hear what he said?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Ralph, can you say that again for Ms. Taylor?
About two and a half million dollars that we're not collecting from the state in K three class size money, because based on poverty, we can reduce those class sizes to fourteen to one. Maximum class size we can have in an elementary to get that money from the state is fourteen. But we don't have the space to have that many teachers.
Is that fact that you're closing their class range, would that, um, use it for something?
No, it's, it's based on the size of the schools themselves, you know, within each school.
Mr. Kramer, just kind of picking up that. Would it be helpful if where you have the schools that are, the capacity is increasing, could you maybe make those different models, like for instance, Green would be K through three, make another school with fourth and fifth graders only? If you mix the kids up that way?
We just don't have enough seats. Plus the age of our facilities. Um, and, and Mr. Westbay makes a great point that, um, if, if, remember, we're doing the capacity based off of twenty-two to one, and kindergarten's at eighteen to one, that's a functional. And in order to get the money, K through three, did I say that right? Would have to be at fourteen to one. So the actual capacity would drop, well, it's more teachers, but it's less capacity. Okay? So it makes even more of a challenge to offer that kind of program when a Broad Rock, an Oak Grove, and those schools are sitting at over a hundred percent functional capacity. It's a challenge for them to try to do that when there just isn't any more room. Okay? So what's the options we have? All right? Do I have to do this? All right. Now, okay, now these options are not in any particular order. These options are out there for discussion purposes. So option number one, we could, to alleviate the pressure that's on Oak Grove and Broad Rock, with Broad Rock having the bulk of that pressure. And Broad Rock, next year, now Broad Rock's at eight twenty-seven. Next year, it's projected to grow by sixty-nine students.
Oh, gosh.
In two thousand sixteen, seventeen, it's projected to grow by another thirty-three students. That's one hundred and two additional students in two years, on top of the eight twenty-seven there today.
So Tommy, those increased numbers, that's net, fifth graders moving on, we're working
So you're going to get some.
So the net would be sixty-nine.
Correct.
Coming into kindergarten.
Correct. Correct, correct, yes, sir. And actually, when you look at Broad Rock, and when we roll out the, the final report to y'all, you will see by grade where that breakdown of the sixty-nine occurs, because we've done it by grade. Now.
Tommy.
So, sir.
And so.
Oh, you weren't going to let me flatter, no, quit.
And so I'm just talking, thinking about geographically in that Broad Rock zone. Because of capacity, is one of the reasons you recommend Oak Grove.
Correct.
Um, and I share with you my, you know, my concern if we went down this road would be to look at the Broad Rock map, the kids who are currently zoned there, and try to make it, make the most geographical sense as possible.
And, and that's what we would, that's what we agree with. What we were thinking is that since Broad Rock has such a strain on its system today, is take some portion of Broad Rock that's close to Oak Grove.
Right.
And, and basically move it into Oak Grove and a part of Oak Grove, move into Black, because Blackwell has four hundred and ten students today in a building that can hold six fifty to seven hundred students.
Right. So, so you, so you were taking some of the Oak Grove kids, moving them to Blackwell?
Right, move this, move them into Blackwell. Oak Grove is projected over the next ten years to basically stay flat.
Right.
Their count's going up plus one or minus one each year.
I would just want to make sure that, you know, having kids, you know, going out like group ten towards the county line, you know, that we're not picking them, sending them to Oak Grove.
It, it, that would make, from an operational standpoint, make any sense, you know? I would like to keep it where it's easier for us to transport the students in Oak Grove, they're closer to Oak Grove, becomes part of their community school, I know Broad Rock's here today, but the closer I can keep that, that, you know, here's Oak Grove, if I could draw a circle around it and keep my mileage equal from point to point, it makes transportation a lot easier. And that would be my goal.
And if we took two fifty out of them, and we did that, would, effectively, what would that put, uh, uh, Broad Rock's capacity and Oak Grove's capacity?
Well, we would drive Broad Rock from eight twenty-seven down to about six hundred.
Which is where they, right where they.
Where, and they still would have some room to handle some growth that they plus.
And Oak Grove, and it, but it wouldn't totally, it wouldn't push Oak Grove too far over the.
What we were doing is making this a wash, so went into Oak Grove, Oak Grove moved up to, to Blackwell, and then, because Blackwell has capacity.
Right.
And Blackwell's not projected to see growth over the next ten years.
One of my concerns.
Ms. Mohammed, talk about Ms. Lars.
One of my concerns with that is, I know Dr. Jolt and I had this, this, the discussion when Oak Grove opened, the children that all live in Hillside Court are going into Oak Grove, because originally, they were going to be split. Fifty-five were only going to go into Oak Grove, and then the rest of those K through five children were, were going to go to Blackwell. My concern with that is it's going to go back to separating. And, and I know that we don't have a lot of options, but, uh, and I know we'll probably have some discussions, since you and I had a lengthy discussion about splitting that development, um, and they all ended up going to Oak Grove, but, um.
So if you kept that development, for an example, one of the, what else we would look at? The Hillside Court development today is two hundred and thirty students.
Right.
From Co to Oak Grove.
Right, right, all of them.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is Hillside Court right about here, correct?
Right.
So, so if that development, and again, I, this is just us talking on, if this development went to, to Blackwell, you see what I'm saying? You're taking a whole community.
Right.
And everybody staying together to go to the new school.
And.
But those are the kind of things we would try to do to minimize, because that would make it easier for making transportation.
Right.
Move a lot of the Hillside Court kids walk down.
Right. But.
Some of them do.
But from a transportation standpoint, it would be easy, you know what I'm saying, to pick up and bring them and what.
Right. But all of them, instead of splitting them.
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, those are the things we would look at.
It's going to have to be, and, and that's, that's where I would go with it, is that not splitting, not fifty going here, not a hundred and twenty-five going there, send them, allow that entire community, two hundred and thirty kids, to travel to Blackwell, because Blackwell, even when, uh, before this board started its term, Blackwell has always been underrepresented. When the rezoning committee was in place, it was not even at fifty-six point six percent.
Okay.
It was not that high. So it has increased, I would, you know, I wonder where the kids come from, but, um, you know, it, it was not that high, so. I mean, I do know where babies come from, it's big hands, but what I meant was, I was not going there, but you went there. I know exactly where they come from. The storm brings them down. Well, I would say, I was trying to, I feel, I'm going to try. But I would, I would vote to move all those kids over, you know, have them all go, not to lose.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be a challenge either way, but I, I definitely miss, you know.
Splitting is going to be worse. Splitting is going to be worse.
Ms. Lars.
So, I also agree about keeping the communities together, um, it, wherever we shift the line, just making a real conscious effort to do that. But I know that there's huge efforts at Oak Grove, um, to have walking paths put in, a lot of that work has been done, to have students walk to school and everything. So I'd also like, you know, whatever work and changes come forward, that we be mindful of that, um, so that we're not, we haven't spent years installing all this stuff, and then the kids now can't walk to that school.
And, and I understand that, and I appreciate that, but here's, here's, here's the challenge. I mean, here's the challenge. So let's just take, this works well, and then it's stacked one on top of the others. This is the only piece of the puzzle where they're all together, okay, that you can reshuffle those zones and make it work. If, if, if we start, um, carving out pieces, for lack of a better term, then all of a sudden, it makes it more difficult, you see what I'm saying? And the, and the operating costs get extremely high. And if we don't, if we don't, uh, if we don't do this, okay? In the next, and you're going to see a number, and again, I think it's going to be a wow factor. But we have a huge problem down here that's going to explode. It is going to explode on September eighth. If, if our prediction's right, on the new schools, on the schools, come September eighth, when sixty-nine students show up at, at, uh, Broad Rock, we have no place. Wait, wait.
Doctor Jones, doctor. Another thing that we haven't touched on is, we're talking money and bricks and mortar, but I want to go back to the main thing we're in. That building is struggling now academically because of this.
Broad Rock.
Yes. It has been one of your highest performing schools, one of your most stellar principals, and she's holding a line, as he says, she's not complaining, she's talked, asked for relief and support, but her numbers, influx of students, have changed faster than we've been able to build resources to support her. So environment influences attitude, and attitude then impacts teachers, students, and their, you know, their mindset of being able to perform in that building. And again, we don't have the resources to provide support. So the other thing you try to do as superintendent, if the building's overcrowded, you put more resources into it to stabilize it until you can address the issue. We have been able to do that. Because we just have the resources and the money, the staffing, the equipment. So we're killing also slowly one of your own stellar elementary schools. So that's another critical reason beyond just the cost. Our first mission is the best quality teaching and learning environment.
And, and I would just, yes, I would just like to, when, when we get into this, and I want us to remember, because this is very serious. I want us to remember that statement that the superintendent just made when we go through this process again. Because I recall, I was saying that when we were in the rezoning process. That something is gonna happen to the academics in those schools on the south side. I didn't know exactly what it was, but I knew somebody's school was going to suffer because of influx of kids, and then you have, if you have a community, or if you have forty-five kids coming from one place that have struggled all their life in K through three, and now they're in grade four and five, it's gonna impact their accreditation status the year after, and that's what has happened. So we have to remember that when we start this process over again, that we have to literally think about where these kids are going, what resources are currently in that school, and so forth and so forth. Because right now, we have a hot mess. And we gotta fix it.
And I'm, I'm just continuing to look at the map, and both of these schools are in my district, and so I, I'm, I've bested both of them. One of the things that is interesting to me, though, you talk about two hundred and thirty kids in Hillside, right, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
That currently descend Oak Grove.
Correct.
Is there any scenario under which we could still provide the relief to Broad Rock? And find, and, and find those two hundred and thirty students in a geographically appropriate area? And, and still send them to Blackwell. So what I'm trying to do is, is there's still a way to salvage Hillside Court to Oak Grove, but still find the same number of students in a geographical area that makes sense instead of Blackwell.
So leave Oak Grove alone.
Leave Hillside, let Hillside.
The community stay at Oak Grove, that's what she's saying.
And, and that's, and that's possible, we've just begun all the whatevs, okay? There's, there's a number of different ways we can do it, and, and what we look, we, I know tonight you can't vote, but if we can get some kind of inclination, if we're in the right direction, you know, we'll start taking it. But one thing that Dr. Bennett said, but there's another school here that y'all need to keep in mind. Green Elementary is actually over, is, is over the building utilization percentage in Broad Rock. Okay? And projected to grow even higher, so. So there's two schools back to back, and guess what? Look at it. Green sits at a hundred fifty-eight point nine five percent, Broad Rock's sitting at a hundred and forty-seven, and this is in ten years. Francis is sitting at a hundred and six percent, Reed sits at a hundred and seven percent, Miles Jones is sitting at ninety-six percent.
In ten years.
Correct. And Green has a little bit that could go into red potentially, but you can see there's not a lot. And for the number of five hundred plus students that's in green, it doesn't fit, just call it. And that's where the real challenge will be for us, as we start dividing this up.
Well, as you continue to look at it, just, and I'll leave you alone.
Yes, sir.
That you talked about heading in the right direction, if you could provide an alternative that would show us keeping Hillside Court and Oak Grove, that would be helpful.
Okay, you got it. So, our options, rezoning, we talked about this, now. If we do, if, and now, this is, this is for September. This is for September eighth. These, these two options are September eighth. Okay? So if we do that, we have the problem at Green, Miles Jones, and Westover, we would have to bring in five portables. And I'm not a proponent of portable, so please do not shoot the messenger about talking about portable. But, and this is leasing the portable. This is not buying it. Okay? The first year that costs six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that would come out of CIP. In year two, where that number goes down smaller, we would have to bring in six portables, and we'd add some at red and Francis, Reed and Francis, and that cost is one point one seven five million. And then that would come out of CIP. Now, let's say, let's say that we're not going to do the rezon, which I understand is a challenge, because we're so close to the start of the school year. So under option two, we address the problems with portable. That would be, in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we would bring in nine portables that would be at those schools. In the second year, we would bring in thirteen additional portables. The cost in fifteen, sixteen is one point one two five million. The cost in sixteen, seventeen is two point three nine million dollars. And again, that's leasing. If we were to acquire him, we would pay a little bit less, but, but here's the thing. Once districts, my, my experience has been, once there's five portables, they start relying on the portable. Portables, portables, if you go to Green, for example, Green has five classes and four portals. Y'all, you heard me right. They have five classrooms and four portables. Okay? And those portables are old.
So two classrooms and a portable.
They don't have covered walkways, so our children have to, when they go in and out of the building, are exposed to the weather and the elements because of those ages. In any kind of inclement weather, we're having to take those children out of the portables and put them inside the building, so we're impacting their instructional time. Portables are not the answer if you're trying to address education. It addresses the facility, but from an education standpoint, it's the worst answer you can have.
Sidebar, these, uh, portables, would they have restrooms in them?
At those prices, yes ma'am, we could.
Oh, they would, okay.
But. It's can I bring plumbing over, can I bring the water over, can I, you know, I have to bring utilities anyway over, but a significant part of bringing portables is bringing all of those utilities over to where a portable's at. So it answered your question, if these costs, they would, but, you know, that, and we've got it factored in, but it's a challenge. And remember, I have a hundred and seventy-four days to pull this off. That's not a lot of time.
You can do it.
Who's saying he can do it?
Mr. Jeffrey back there.
Hold on.
I'm just a quick question. When I see on the line, I'll be.
No, we changed those numbers, we had to change our number. So that's, the, the portable cost, these are better numbers, we gotta do some last minute decisions. All right? They would be very similar, but not identical, but would be very similar. So now, what's the long-term plan? The long-term plan, the recommendation we would give is build a new elementary school in the south central area of the whole south elementary area. That particular school, an elementary school, can be built in twelve months. We have good design plans that, when we have a location, and I would prefer tonight not to get too public about a particular school, because there's a lot of options out there. But there's sites that are there today that could, uh, we could build an elementary school and keep the existing elementary school in site on place. And to therefore, that school potentially could be ready, potentially could be ready for sixteen, seventeen, if everything worked well. Okay, but more likely, it's in seventeen, eighteen, and you would open it in mid-year. The cost of an elementary school's gonna be in the twenty-five to thirty million dollar range. And it depends on the size, but we're proposing bigger elementary schools, as we'll talk about. That school would, would address the projected growth in this particular area? Do we would recommend renovating an existing school plus an addition, which would result in one, in a net of one elementary school being closed? Okay? Because remember I said, our numbers, we only had eight elementary schools of twenty-five that was larger than six hundred students. And only three were larger than six, or six fifty or larger. Okay? On an elementary school, typically, you're looking at about a half a million dollars of annual savings. Okay? And that's a per-year number. The other part of this plan, because it's not just that one page. The second page is building a new school in the northwest portion of the zone. Again, projected cost would be thirty million dollars. This would allow one school to be closed. The annual savings from that particular would be fifty thou, five hundred thousand dollars per year. Correct. So the net effect, the net, the net impact of what we're proposing is building two new elementary schools, renovating one with an addition. And the result would be is, we would go from twelve elementary schools down to ten. Now, if you look at elementary schools, if the size of an elementary school were a thousand math, and you're gonna use a utilization of eighty-five to ninety percent, keeping Broad Rock and Oak Grove because they're so branded, those ten elementary schools could be, you could go from ten to six. So that would be four instead of two. So instead of one million dollars of saving a year, you could generate two million dollars of savings per year from the four.
For closing four schools.
Correct. But you would have to build, we would have to do renovations in addition, and a lot of our schools can do addition, but we would have to get to a larger size elementary school than what we have today. The two is keeping it at that six fifty mark from a functional standpoint. That's the decision that you of the board have to make. What size school do you want? I, I can have built a four hundred student school, a six hundred and fifty student school, a three thousand student school. Well, but I'm, I'm, but from a construction standpoint, you, you tell us what you want built, we can build. Now here's the discussion, it's between you and the administration and the academic leadership. What's the ideal number, not of students, but gives the resources to do the things you want to get done inside that classroom? And it's not small schools, because they cost more money. Unless, unless you got a sugar daddy somewhere. For higher dollars. Ralph?
A sugar daddy?
Yeah, dude.
We got Asian men over here, we got sugar daddies over there.
Ralph, I need help, please come help me.
I'll buy you a steak by Del Mar.
Now Ralph's got something to add.
No, I was just gonna say that, in looking at what you're saying, it just brings to mind, I mean, I see that you've got small schools or investments in larger schools. So either way, it's money. We're gonna spend money either way. It's a matter of, do we spend operating money on smaller schools forever? Or do we spend one-time money on capital and make them right? That's the choice.
And, and at the end of the day, under this plan, to make everything equal, there would be some rezoning. Because you're gonna want it all to work in the long term, not just next year, or in three years. You're gonna want it to work for the next ten-plus years.
That's right.
Okay?
Would you be talking about rezoning at the elementary level again, or just across the board?
In the, well, in the elementary level, you're gonna wanna true it up to make it fit where the assets and the growth are projected to take place. But with this plan, with this plan, you would have greater flexibility to grant quothring and other things to give it some time, but you would have that as your goal, would be to do the rezoning and kinda true it up.
And I, if I may, and maybe this is, this is more for you, Dr. Bennett, would academically, we factor in looking at any other models like, uh, K through eight building, does that, Ms. Kane?
I mean, that is, I mean, I've been in systems, I've taken a school, my district in Georgia, converted from K to eight. So I mean, you could, but if, if you do K to eight, it's just like the large elementary schools, it's about how you're able to design it. Because you don't want that large group of kids interacting with that small group of kids. So you gotta look at the footprint that you're talking about of the building design and the space you're putting it on, and your ability to actually function within it and keep them separate in the process. So the benefit of a K to eight is academically, you cut out the transition, you have an easier vertical planning between teachers, that community that's developed stays there for a longer period of time. Now, some would say it's not working well, but communities, longer period of time than opposite. So all those things that you can look at, when you talk about a K to eight, uh, to make an informed decision, doesn't actually work as the best option for that community. But you'd have to factor in design, just like we're talking about on an elementary. If you did a thousand, some people get nervous with that. But like, if you can do a two-tiered building, you could actually do K to two on the first level, three to five on the second. And again, some of your reinvestment of savings is back into that school and also into your academic program overall. So maybe I'd actually make sure that when you're gonna need it, administrative offices and building on each floor, for supervision and support purposes, and those type of things you have to talk through.
Now, has this, we've looked at the histories, because as a district, we did a plan very similar to this in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight. We did one in two thousand two, and we did one in two thousand and seven. This plan is, is, is consistent with what was identified as a two thousand seven master plan. It's not dramatically different, there's some tweaks. But where things are at, where they were going, what was the crystal ball in two thousand seven seems to be kinda similar to the crystal ball today. The plan, as we talked, discussed, did not anticipate any significant growth in our elementary schools, and that's the positive that's taking place with the district, we're seeing that growth, which is good for hopefully our middle and our high school programs. Because of that, there was a limited implementation of our, not because of the growth, but the seventh plan was kinda limited, and what it did, we talked about the fact that with L. Park, for example, earlier at another presentation, L. Park was scheduled with Thompson to be consolidated into one, um, and that did not take place. But that was in the original plan, okay, and fits what we're doing today. Not, and I, and I, and I don't mean to cry wolf, but, you know, let me just say this. There's a hundred and seventy-four days to the start of school year, and from a facility standpoint, that is tomorrow. I can't, I can't stress that enough. Okay, from a facility standpoint, that's like being there tomorrow. Okay? If we don't do things, we're gonna have catastrophic results. Okay? There's, there is not a way for me, and I know, you know, all I can do is work extremely hard and try my best. I don't have a wand that's gonna create space for sixty-nine students at Broad Rock come September eighth. Okay? Green has got a projection of. Green has got a projection of about 35 students come September 8th. Okay? That's the reality that's coming on September 8th of 2015. That's a catastrophe that's waiting to happen. Okay? Now, when we talk about rightsizing, and there's been this big discussion on rightsizing the district from everybody in this community, what does rightsizing involve? It's not a silver bullet, as Dr. Bennett says repeatedly. Rightsizing involves these kind of tools that are in the toolbox. It involves renovating space. It involves closures. It involves new construction. And then it involves the change of boundaries. It's all of those tools. There's not one single tool that's gonna address all the problems that we have today from our facility needs. And remember, I haven't addressed tonight what those renovation costs are needed, what those additional costs are needed. We've just talked about in the elementary schools, what's the cost of new buildings? You saw the cost on the middle schools for renovations. 23 million, and one was 27 million dollars. That's because the age of our facilities, and to bring them where every child in Richmond has the same facilities for that educational opportunity, it takes to modernize those facilities to, and I can't do it and be a perfect match, but I can get close. And it just takes money. As Ralph said, small schools, that's a choice. Or are we gonna make investments in larger schools? I can build either one. I can manage it from a facility standpoint, either one. But there's significant operating costs differential between those two. And the construction costs are significantly greater, because if you build two 400-person schools versus one 800, the two 400 will cost more money than the one 800. Okay? Significantly more money. The upcoming events that will be taking place, um, on our completion date, we'll have to probably beat that. We will have the facilities report. As you've seen, you've got a pretty good preview of what's in the facilities report on just these schools. There's more data than what we've given tonight. But we'll finalize the report by March 30th. The task force will have a meeting on Wednesday, April 1st. We will begin the discussion with the individual board members during the week of April 6th, so that y'all have a chance, one-on-one, to see it, discuss it, and go through it as much detail as you would like. And I will meet y'all anywhere you would like. So it doesn't, it's at your pleasure. Weekends, anything, you tell me. I will make my schedule fit your schedule. The plan, as I understand, Ms. Larson, if I'm correct, will be presented to the full board on Monday, April 13th?
The facilities plan.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am?
And just to add something, we're trying to get that joint meeting for April 27th. Yes. There's a couple other May dates, so if you haven't gotten back to Ms. Lewis about that joint date, please do.
I appreciate the opportunity to present. I would, you know, we, we have, a lot of work has gone into this facilities report, and it's been an effort by everybody. A significant reason for our delays has been just the challenges that we have faced as a district, and where time has had to go to address those challenges. But you can see, I hope you can see from the data we've presented tonight, that the pieces are there. It's now just putting it in our final report.
Mr. Bourne.
Yeah, Ms. Lewis just told me that she has five board members for a joint meeting on May 26th.
Am I one of them?
April 26th?
No, I mean May. So... It's the day after Memorial Day. So I guess, you know, we need to decide if we wanna wait that long, if we wanna go back to council, ask for some more dates.
I think they go back and ask for some more dates.
Can we, can we get dates to offer them? That we don't have five of us there? That seems to be...
Can I, can I, if we're, if we're meeting individually, or two-by-two, or whatever the carbon is we are running on...
A week and a sixth?
A week and a sixth. Couldn't we push everything that's not absolutely required of us on 13th off to our next meeting and close that as a date for a joint council meeting?
Um, I work for the board, so if y'all wanna do that...
I think, I think this conversation, given the, given the context of budget discussions and budget season that we're in, uh, and we have been, we've all been saying, we agree the rightsizing's gonna happen, we're gonna push, we're gonna do it. We now have a plan, which will be backed up much more substantively with the city's task force report. And so I think, um, the season is here for us to say we've got a plan to address some of those urgent immediate needs, which are South Richmond. That's where we're seeing all the growth, all the problems. Here's our plan, let's talk about it. And, you know, it's the old adage, you ask for something and you get it, now that you get it. And I think city councils, it's, the ball's in their court now, they're, they're kicking the budget around, so...
So, I see some heads nodding, that, that, that that's a possibility for, that we could offer them the 13th?
Offer them the 13th.
Okay. That was another, that was, yeah, we'll, we'll, that, that'll now be a part of the conversation.
I, I think that's tonight in their budget, public hearing, so...
Oh, yeah, it is.
But I mean, maybe we could do it in another meeting.
I know, we don't have any problem with that tonight, maybe they'd like to meet on Tuesday.
That's a great idea.
Mr....
So I just wanted to remind you and the whole board here, the conversation that I had with you, and asked that, Tommy's alluded to it, we got a short one. So they're gonna, and at some point, it has to be a real conversation, and I suggest to you, maybe that's, we meet on Mondays. Maybe we should block out Mondays, because there are a lot of conversations that happen to happen that we gotta know we're headed in the right direction. We do a lot of work and nothing happens, it's gonna create a lot of problems. The other issue is, you do have a window with a timeline, because at some point, the council has to vote on this budget. And so we need to have as much of our ducks in a row that provide them the information to make the right decisions in the mayor, if he's gonna make changes before that deadline. So at some point, the next meeting we're together, we really gotta have that, what we talked about, what we asking you all for, that we block out. Because what's hard is, what you're trying to, Mrs. Lewis is trying to do, because you all have things already built in. So there has to be a conversation. And I would suggest, even next year's calendar that you all set, that maybe there needs to be a conversation, that Mondays are your dates. And people try to avoid those, so we can have these emergency sessions you gotta have.
And, uh, Dr. Bennett, parallel to this conversation that we're having about facilities and recognizing that we've got 174 days...
174?
174 days. Will we be having a parallel conversation about what happens to the staff at Elkhart?
Say, well, that, the staff is a staff, and nothing happens to them, if you mean job-wise. They, they don't, this doesn't trigger their job issues. Their job, it's all driven by performance. So there's nothing, at this point, that's tied to facilities. We gotta, we gotta staff and the needs of the students.
Okay, so I'll give you a hypothetical. All of the staff at Elkhart are performing at a standard where they will all be considered for coming back in September. Would they follow the children?
As of right now, yes. Unless something changed with, someone says, you know, they go through normal, say, I don't wanna go, and I wanna put in for transfer, that would be normal process. Everything right now, impact of staff would be based on their performance or our normal operating procedures of need-based, driven by what the students need in the building. So I can never tell you what changes are just driven by...
All right, Mr. Bourne, follow up with Ms. Larson.
So, I think this is a dead horse we need to beat. But I think we need to be extremely assertive in our will, our desire to meet collectively with the council during this budget time. We all knew it was pressing, you can see it up on the screen. I think it is stark. I mean, it is, it is a stark reminder of what we need to do over the next 30 days. And one of the things that, the line that struck me a couple slides back was lack of action at catastrophic results.
Yes.
And I think this board has spent two years living that from a, from a, a lack of action on really important issues. And whether it's for maintenance, or whether it's accountability for teachers and people that are in front of our students. So I would just, I would urge you as our leader to press as hard and as politely as you can.